We'll call the planning zoning meeting at order. All our members are here, thank you, showing up on such a pretty day. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, under its a individual liberty and justice law.
Has everybody had a chance to look the agenda? Do I hear a motion for approval?
Move the agenda.
Second, Pete, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Has everybody read the minutes from the prior meeting in June? And if so, does anybody have any comments, modifications, changes?
Move the minutes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is some announcements. Susan, could you give us an update on the Non-Residential Design Review Committee?
They met last week, and we had two applications. One was for Pack the Bowl, which is up Garfield Parkway, in the shopping center next to the Wawa. And it was approved for its wall sign and for the window decals. We then had a second application for a condominium that has two buildings on North Atlantic Cedar Sands. And they requested a sign to replace one they have there now that's low to the ground and just gives the name of the condos. And they asked for one that was at the driveway that was directional because they were having difficulty. It's, let me get this right, I think it's 35 and 37 North Atlantic Avenue. And 37 is the one behind on the boardwalk. And deliveries were not being able to find it. So they asked for a small sign at the driveway pointing to 37. And then they asked for a sign on the side of the building fronting on the boardwalk on 37, so that if you were renting and you were walking along the boardwalk, you'd know which building you were supposed to go to. And they were all approved. We have others in town very similar.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is the discussion approval. Scott, could you comment on the efforts of the Town Council, please?
Yeah, thank you. So, the Town Council had three hearings yesterday. Our first was a public hearing on combining the Walchek and Demetitis properties and rezoning, sorry, not combining, but rezoning them to the town's more classification. The purpose of the hearing was for public comment. There was no public comment. So that hearing lasted four minutes. And then we had a public hearing on the updated tax assessments, again, to receive public comment, which there was none. So that hearing lasted three minutes, which is great. I've been told that's a new record. And then, at our regularly scheduled Town Council hearing, we, I think the most important thing was we got a presentation from a representative for U.S. Wind on their proposed wind farm, which will be off the coast of Ocean City, Maryland, with connection to the Delaware power grid through the Indian River. If you haven't seen it, if you didn't get a chance to attend, or if you're listening online, I encourage you to go online. That presentation, I think, will be available on our website, the Town of Bethany's website. And it's worth, it's worth a listen.
And the Bethany Beach YouTube site.
And the Bethany Beach YouTube site, which you subscribe, should subscribe to, so that we can have a thousand followers.
I assume that didn't set a new record.
That one did not set a new, well, it may have on the other end.
Okay. Do the Planning Commission members have any comments or statements they would like to make? Yes, John?
Mr. Chairman, you gave Mark and I a homework assignment, and he has distributed a working draft. And he was kind enough to put my name on it as a joint effort. But, in truth, he did, he did, he did the bulk of the work. We did discuss it, but he gets the credit, and it's going to be very helpful to us going forward.
Yes, I read it, and I said to Mark, I don't know if they heard me earlier, it was good work. I do appreciate it. And John, your sage advice was seen in the report.
Well, you know, as the editor, senior editor, I guess. That's, that was.
Thank you. Well, we have a very honored group of citizens today. Just about all of the entire council's here. Does the council have any comments they'd like to make to us? I guess they've had enough of us, okay. Pardon me. With that, we'll go on to new business. First new business is the IPA review of the comprehensive plan project. And Terry will provide us with names, numbers, and who to hold responsible.
I'm going to provide you with a name. And after that, it's going to be BJ. I'd like to introduce BJ Decourcy from IPA, University of Delaware. And they, he's prepared a PowerPoint presentation, which we're trying to copy for you, but the copier has not cooperated. It's jammed a couple of times. But we do have the PowerPoint, and I'll send it out to everybody so that you actually have a color copy of it, too. So BJ is a lead planner for Institute of Public Administration at University of Delaware. BJ?
Thank you, Terry, and good morning, everybody. Yeah, apologies that you don't have the PowerPoint. You're not missing a ton, because at least the way I had it printed out was black and white. But the only thing really in detail that you might want to be able to see with a little bit more scrutiny is the map series, of which I've brought almost all of them. So I could, either/or, we can do the presentation, or I can just send out a blast of the map series. But either way, like Terry said, I'm BJ Dec, I go by BJ. My given name is William at IPA. We've been doing comprehensive plans there since, I don't know, about 2000, kind of when the Liverpool Delaware thing started. Matter of fact, I happen to know that we did Bethany Beach's plan in 2005. And I believe I was part of it, like, as a helper, a little helper student. So I'm glad to be, glad to be back. Generally speaking, I'm, for a planner, I'm kind of geographically challenged. Like, I'll get lost in my backyard if you spin me around. So I usually try to come and tour the town before I come and speak to the people that are in it. But we're doing our town tour later on today. I've got the whole family parking at the beach and setting up the tent now. So forgive me if I make any terrible flubs. So while we've got everyone here today, one of the ways that we like to kick off is with a neck-down version of our Planning 101 training. This isn't me, this is just getting back on the same page. I know that a lot of you probably know just as much or not more about this than I do. But just for the benefit of council, the commission, people that might be watching and wondering what we're up to, just so everyone's understanding what we mean when we're saying that we're updating the comprehensive plan and why did we go through this process. So if you'll bear with me and listen with me, listen to me for 15 or 20 minutes, the remainder of the presentation, or of our time together, is really me needing direction, information, and positional statements from the town. Because I don't know the town anywhere near as well as everyone here does. So why do we need to plan? And we know that we get a letter or we get a phone call from the Office of State Planning every so often saying that our plan update is overdue, or that it's time to get it done. And so clearly, the legislative requirement to plan is a good enough reason to do it, but there's a lot of other reasons also. So there's the, where does the plan fit in our municipal development strategy? Obviously, the legal. And then who are our planning partners? And how do we all work together? Then we'll look at the plan real briefly, the characteristics, the elements, and the implementation. And then we'll talk a little bit of specifics about Bethany Beach's particular plan update. So as I kind of buried the lead there, but there is a legislative requirement to plan. We can't just not have a comprehensive plan. The enforcement mechanism really is if we don't have a comprehensive plan, we can't annex. So I guess very technically, since Bethany doesn't seem to have a lot of interest in annexing, but I don't think we're going to wiggle out just for that reason. Also, it's ideally a basis for local decisions. Sometimes the plan is seen as something that kind of has to be done, and a box to be checked off, and then to get set aside. But, and I'll come back to this a little bit more later. Ideally, the plan is going to be a very collaborative thing that has council, has Planning Commission, has members of the various subcommittees that are bought into it. So it's a document that speaks to a number of different things. Also, there's changing regional conditions. Populations change, the nature of work changes. All these things that we can't foresee change. Guidance for citizens and developers, and then also eligibility for programs from other levels of government is a particularly important one, particularly, especially when, perhaps you're interested in beach replenishment or stormwater management, and you're going to need grants and so on. Now, I saw from your website that you've, that our senators did excellent work securing some of those funds. But having it in, having specific language in the plan showing, you know, this is why and what and how, which you've done very well in the past, is a way to say, you know, we've been thinking about this since 2005. So when you're applying for a grant, or whatever else, you're able to show that this isn't kind of a spur-of-the-moment seat of the pants. So what is the planning context? Well, there's a lot, there's a whole long list of stuff up here. Obviously, we live in the United States of America, so we have the U.S. Constitution, our states have constitutions. There's state laws, there's county laws. And really, the basis of this is that compared to the U.S. Constitution, your zoning law is way, way, way more impactful on what happens here in Bethany Beach, right? So all in, in the, in the U.S., land use is local. I know we all know this intrinsically. But it's just kind of worth pointing out that regardless of state laws or federal initiatives, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, if you guys have a PowerPoint that's not complete, I think it printed every other page, so if that's what you have to do.
Okay, thank you.
If you're not cooperating, I apologize. Will we send the PowerPoint out to you?
Thank you.
Email so you can look at it as well. So I apologize.
We'll just pay more attention.
I knew I wasn't that dynamic of a speaker, but I was wondering why I was getting those faces.
We're following you and reading.
Okay. So yeah, but land use is local, so what, you zone things is what they're going to be. There's no kind of higher power. As we get into planning in the Delaware code, my eyes aren't quite doing it here. Well, I'm going to have to trust that you can read that at your leisure, because I can't. But planning is built into the code, and most notably subsection, I should have printed it a little bit bigger. I'm sorry. Yes, Title 22, Chapter 7, is what I was looking for. But it is a legislative requirement, and it's built in throughout the state and the county, and kind of tied together. One of the other requirements is the intergovernmental coordination. So even if it's a quick and dirty kind of fix-the-text-and-tables update, it's still very important that you work with, say, Oceanview and Sussex County, maybe even South Bethany, depending on what everyone's plan looks like, just to get sign-off and so on. So our planning partners, this is a slide that shows me. So we have the governing body, that'd be council, that kind of just showed up. Then we have the citizens, also, that will have a chance to have their voice heard at a, at a public hearing, or if we have a workshop. There's the Planning Commission. I didn't actually read your exact charter for this, but it's pretty uniform. I mean, generally, the role of the Planning Commission is develop land use policies that are beneficial for the health, welfare, and safety, and so on, of the citizenry, and then to recommend that plan to council for adoption. And of course, council reserves the right to reject the Planning Commission's recommendation, or to alter it, or so on. But just practically speaking, I mean, I'm not giving a legal lesson. Usually, it's the Planning Commission, or some mixture of the Planning Commission and the Town Council, relying heavily on staff, that will go through and will update the plan. Then towards the end of the process, the Planning Commission will generally recommend the plan for review or kind of preauthorization by the Town Council. And then we'll get into PLUS, and I'll stop there because there's a whole nother slide on PLUS. The end of the process here is the governor's certification, which usually happens several months after the plan is finally adopted. Then we get all the stuff, and we package it in and print it out and send it on back. So the state strategies are kind of interesting. If you can imagine that you took a map of Delaware, and then you took a piece of like transparent grid paper, you know, little blocks, and laid it down over the state. Obviously, if you look here in red, the red and the orange are levels 1 and 2. These are areas where the state would most favor growth. And then the lighter areas, the 3, which is kind of the light yellow, and then the white are areas where the state less, or is not really all that supportive of growth. And so you would think of this, kind of going back to our earlier discussion, kind of like the state is zoning itself. But, but they're not. Zoning is entirely, entirely local. What the state is trying to show us here, and what they've been doing since, you know, the late 90s or early 2000s, is trying to save money and be responsible with taxpayer funds. Because every time that a new development gets built kind of out in the hinterlands, then the state has to spend the money on the schools and the roads and so on to service that development. So that's not as much an issue in the very historic parts of the state. And Bethany's been here for a good, long while. But it's kind of, it's kind of that anti-sprawl. But people will look at this and say, oh, that means that I can't build a house here or there, or that the town can't grow here or there. And that's not the case. Because like I say, if you go back to that imaginary grid paper example, what the state will do is say, where are our population centers? And so if that little piece falls in a population center, it gets plus one point. You know, where do we have water and sewer? Do we have water and sewer here? It gets plus one point. And so you do that with a million different factors. Where do we have transit? Where's there not congestion? And you end up getting these areas that are darker red and more favored. And so I'm not an expert on exactly what they do. But this is where transportation projects that are in or near these areas would be favored, whereas those that are outside would not. Sewer projects, certificates of public need and necessity, all those things more likely to be approved in these areas than outside. And thankfully, you'll notice that almost every single one of the 57 municipalities, no, are in red. So it's a, it's a planning tool that doesn't have a huge distinction for Bethany Beach. So we'll talk about the plan a little bit, the overview and the characteristics, the required plan elements. I talked about intergovernmental coordination in PLUS a little bit. And then we'll touch on implementation. So again, this idea of the plan being central, and that's ideally. You know, we're talking in the real world here. I mean, sometimes, and in some cases, the plan can be kind of an afterthought. Oh, it has to get updated, we'll get that through the process. And then it kind of goes back on the shelf. And that's, that's fine. You know, we live, we all live in the real world. But ideally, to have an effective plan, to have it speak to the other policies in the town, it's envisioned as being very central. So it's going to have a number of vision statements in it. And it should reference, you know, your zoning ordinance. It shouldn't be your historic preservation policy in the plan necessarily. But it should, it should reference what your historic preservation plan is and have the key goals. Growth and annexation, it speaks directly to. Environmental protection, it speaks directly to. But it's not to say that it has to be the only thing. But it's going to be directly tied in. And the policies and the recommendations in the plan should be supportive of all the other committees' work. So I know you have a bike-ped committee, you have a number of subcommittees. So it's really helpful to have those things built into the plan going forward, so you have one document to refer back to. Or so people aren't doing something, I don't know how much, how contentious some things are, but invariably, when something is proposed, you might have someone that has concerns. And they'll come in and say, well, I'm reading your bike-ped plan here. And it says on Garfield, we're going to do raised sidewalks or raised crosswalks with the rumble strips. But here in the comprehensive plan, it just says that we're going to, you know. So you want them to say the same thing. You want one to inform the other. So there's no confusion in that regard. So a little redundancy here, but obviously, it's statutorily mandated. There's some discussion, the legislative language says that the comprehensive plan will have the force of law. So it's important to be selective with your language, and also judicious with things when you say must or shall. Because it's, I haven't seen it happen too often. But it's possible, like I was just saying, if someone can hold up the plan, and they'll say the town says that they're going to ensure that, you know. Let's just pretend, I know you've got the EV charging stations, and that's coming online. So let's say someone was very passionate about that and said that we're going to ensure that EVs are going to be a significant portion of such or whatever. And then someone says, well, significant, you know, that should be 20% or something. So we just have to be careful with the language that's in the plan, because it could potentially have the force of law if someone really took you to task on it. Now, in practical terms, what that's talking about is your future land use map, which is a bit of a precursor to the zoning. But also, when describing the nature and character of structures, it's important to be either very deliberate or not as specific in the comprehensive plan as you might be in your zoning ordinance. There's been other beach communities going back at least, I don't know, 15 or so years, that aren't too far from here, that have said, we want this area of town to be the most intensely developed because we want this area to be less. And they've had developers that have argued that interpretation with them in court, that if this is the most, then it has to be taller. Or if this is the most, then it has to be bigger, you know. So I'll just leave that where it is. So the required plan elements for all municipalities, this is something, I'm almost done talking here, I promise, that I would like to have a little back and forth on. But, and by the way, we're tickled that you've hired us. But in going through the plan document that the town had started to update, it was quite nicely done. I see you've got a number of positional vision statements throughout. But the format, or just things kind of evolve of what plans looked like, and you've got kind of an early 2000s version of the plan. So it still had the kind of the garment on the dashboard, and so on. And now we're in 2005, or we're in 2022, where it's more Bluetooth. So we have, in rewriting the plan, have just changed the format a little bit to reflect just kind of how it's evolved. I think you originally had the old three-chapter plan. It looks like you've already moved on. Well, that's kind of, so the old format versus new. So you do have a number of positional statements. But the thing is that will be required to have a specific thing on, and I'll just kind of go through them, because not all of these require a paragraph, but a position on population growth. So Bethany Beach, I see your current vision is to become a year-round or to kind of transition towards year-round. So we, we want more people, or we don't. So we just have to have, find a fancy way of saying that. Housing growth, you know, we want to have more homes built and of kind of of general types. Or we feel we've got plenty of housing, and we just want to get more people staying here year-round. Expansion of boundaries is another big one, where a town has to have a stated position, either in words or on the map. We would consider annexing in this area, or that, or not. And then most of the others, community character. I think you've got pretty well covered. Most of the others are kind of covered throughout the course of the plan. But at least those four will be things that will require to have a kind of a specific policy on. And I'd like to either, with this group, or in back and forth with whatever group we end up working on, is kind of one of the last pieces we need to backfill throughout some of the work that we've got done, so it's in a place that we can share without being presumptive. And then that's getting us towards the land use element. And so this is where, in most towns, well, anywhere, it's really where the rubber meets the road. So, because everyone wants to jump ahead to zoning, because that's what we always, that's what we always talk about. But the ideal process, and we've been working on this with Terry already, is to build up the existing land use. So you're going to look at the town, you know, a town of this size, you don't generally walk around and look at every parcel. But people understand what's going on when they look at the map. And to say, what do I see when I look? So if I'm on the street and I turn and I look at this parcel, what do I see when I look at it? So if I see an old gas station where the tanks were leaking, and there hasn't been a tenant in there since 1998 because no one wants to take that on, even though I'm looking at a parcel that has a business-ish thing on it and that is currently zoned commercial for my existing land use, I'm going to call that vacant, because there's nothing going on. It doesn't matter that it's zoned commercial or that it has a commercial-style building. What use is it right now? And if the answer is no use, then we typically will call that vacant. And existing land use doesn't have the same regulatory features attached to it. You don't have to zone according to your existing land use. That's done, so now you build up the full map of the town. And you can see, boy, over here, we've got quite a few, there's more vacant sprinkled in there than I thought. You know, why isn't, something isn't working if these parcels aren't being used. So that's kind of a thought process of, perhaps we should have a different future land use that would make these parcels more attractive. The future land use is where you're talking about the desired, what you would like to see in a general sense. So usually, that's still going to fall into residential, or commercial, or institutional. But you're, you're stopping short of saying it's going to be R1 or R3. You're staying a little bit more general, so that when you get to zoning, you can be as specific as you, as you care to be. So one of the latter pieces is, you know, the writing of the plan really doesn't take all that long. Depends on the back and forth and getting it just right. But the review process and the engagement process with your own citizens, and then any back and forth that you might have with Sussex County or Oceanview, that really is, it's a part of the planning process that takes longer, and that might seem kind of like, eh, like I feel like it was written already. But that's really the important part. Like, there's no point in having a really beautiful plan with awesome pictures and so on and so forth. And then you get it recommended by the Planning Commission, and you go through two readings at council, and you go through your PLUS meeting, and then you get it certified by the governor. And then you just find out that, you know, there's a big development that you weren't aware of because you weren't open enough with your own citizens or with your neighbors. And so it does feel sometimes like the plan has been written for a while, and it's still waiting. And to be, to be fair, the PLUS review does take a little bit, but it's not overly burdensome. And, you know, you're getting a review from all the different agencies, and kind of getting out front. Oh, sorry, I was talking a slide ahead. So there we go. Now, here's the slide I was, I was talking about a moment ago, really. And this is the, this is, I think this is Camden. But I just have this up as an example. So you can see on their future land use map, they're just talking about this is yellow residential, this is red commercial, this is purple industrial. And they're not going to take that next step of going to R1, R2, R3, R4, or commercial neighborhood slash commercial highway until they get to the zoning. And this, this is a way of keeping some flexibility. Now, it's not to say that you can't be more prescriptive in the comprehensive plan in your future land use element. But the key is that you're required, that your zoning matches your future land. land use. So I know this is, it's difficult to say, to talk about in words. And it's easier when you're staring right at the map that's in front of you. But we always get caught in this kind of feedback loop of trying to tell people that future land use isn't zoning. Future land use is your vision for the town, and zoning is deregulation. But the way that the regulations work in Delaware is that you have to, they have to match. They don't have to match exactly, but if something shows up yellow on future land use, then it has to be zoned in a way that something residential can be put on it in your zoning. So... I'm not sure I'm getting, I'm articulated in that perfectly, but trust me, it'll be, it'll become clear in the course of our working together. So finally, yeah, okay. So I'm done for the, the planning 101. So I wanted to talk a little bit about planning Bethany Beach's future. And, and I hope that this is the point of the presentation where we can get a little back and forth. Because I, I come down here and I'm like, talking about all this stuff that I know so well, but I don't know a whole lot about Bethany Beach just yet. I mean, I've read a ton about it. I've, I've done a lot of research on it. I've been kind of rewriting the plan, but it sounds like I know a lot more than I do. Because if you put me outside, I'd be like, which way is the bay and which way is the beach? So... Let's talk about the deadlines first and the schedule that we're under. It's a tight schedule. It really is. So the plan certification will typically happen a month or two or three. It just depends on how quickly the, the governor's, the, the letter circulates through the governor's office. But that's kind of the, the cherry on top. Once the plan has gone through the plus process and is kind of en route, then, then our work truly is done. So I don't know exactly when the plan would be certified, if we're able to hold perfectly to our schedule. But to meet our February deadline, that I think we've been given by the Office of State Planning, we would have to have, assuming you're going to adopt the plan by ordinance rather than resolution, and that that would require two readings, I'm gathering, in most cases, then we would have to have the plan ready for adoption by January and February, which would mean that we would have to have our draft plan into plus by the beginning of December, which essentially means that we have August, September, October, and November to, to write up the plan, get it added in and get it in good shape. Concurrent with that, once the future land use is decided, which I'm hoping isn't a big issue, we'll have to reach out to Sussex County and Ocean View, who also recently did their plan, share with them your future land use and any growth or concerns, and get their sign off on that. So we've got some, some, some chapters to read and go through and to mark up. So that is a pretty tight schedule, complicated by the fact that although we, oh, I'll say, I skipped a slide. No matter. So you know me now. Some of you have had some correspondence with Nicole Mini. She's our GIS specialist. I don't know how many planners we have in the room or people that are in kind of that field, but Nicole, almost every year wins the, one of the awards at the Delaware GIS Conference or often at the American Planning Association. Jennifer Wrights, I always have a difficult time with her last name, longtime planner, recently brought on to IPA. She worked for Newcastle County for a number of years and then went into private practice and now is back. She's very gifted with a special background in historic preservation, but also in, in sustainability and environmental things. Which brings me to, this was supposed to be my segue, rather ambitious schedule and one of the nice things, or one of the not nice things, depending on how you're looking at it, of working with a university, is we always find opportunities to do more work and to incorporate other exciting things in. So I'll ask this as a question really, but in, in my research so far, it seems like beach replenishment is a big deal here? Notting heads? Okay. Yeah. Yeah. I gathered that. I also seem, it seems like flooding, especially stormwater management has been important recently, or not recently, but has become an issue. Is anyone here aware of the initiative they just had going on in Lewis, the sea level rise commission? I don't know if anyone's aware of this or not, but they were using your resilience fund that you established some time ago, kind of as a pilot, and it's something that they held out. And I think it's one of the recommendations that they ended up endorsing. So we've done work, like, you know, very recently with other beach communities that are concerned about replenishment, that are concerned about flooding, particularly stormwater, that also deal with the phenomenon of the tide backing up the, the canal and stormwater not draining all that well. So one of the things that we would like to dig into, and we don't have to, we can just do a lock, stock, if that's your preference. But Jen was hoping to share some of the recommendations and some of the thought process that they went through in Lewis with this group, with an eye towards turning your environmental chapter into an environmental slash sustainability chapter, which might serve as a backbone for, you know, I know you've got the, the Loop Canal study. I know that you often have to make your case over and over again and to different people on the beach replenishment, and try to tie all those things in to show that you're dealing with them holistically. So we're not just jumping up and down saying we need our beach back. It's also, you know, that we're recognizing all these other factors. And the other thing, which is, is less of an ask, but we have an ongoing project with DLDOT. Some of you may or not be aware that DLDOT now has, very much like the Office of State Planning does, circuit rider planners, kind of roving helpers for, and they have some for Sussex, some for Kent, and some for Newcastle. And we, since IPA has a fairly long history of working with the municipalities and interacting with them, we've been playing that role of kind of helping DLDOT in the door with a number of towns. But it's, it's really valuable, because I know that, or I've read, that you've got the, the work on Garfield Parkway that was recently done or that's conceptualized. I know that there's been a lot of work with the bike pet committee. But if there's other transportation issues, you can get the, you can get them in here or in your working group meetings before the plan is fully written, you know. So if you have issues, you can talk to them ahead of time, and they can tell you what, what I would say is such and such and such and such. We just had a similar process when I was doing Little Town by Dover, Wyoming, Wyoming's comp plan. And they had the Camden, Wyoming bypass trucking through there. And DLDOT came out and met with the town, because at the plus process, you'll have your plan written. And then it'll go in and the Department of Agriculture and the Fire Marshal and DLDOT and OSBC and housing, and everyone else will, Denrec will look at it. But now that the cake is mostly baked, they're going to give you a long list. Actually, I had one, I had one up here. I put it back in my briefcase, but a thick letter that you can wave around without a bending of, of recommendations. But you've already been through your public process and you've already kind of formed your opinions. The nice thing about having DLDOT in early, I'll just finish my story about what they did, is with the town having some concerns about the bypass, they said, I would suggest that you ask DLDOT for traffic counts on the street now, right? And then for traffic counts on those same streets later. So if the project ends up having an adverse effect on the traffic flows through your town, you'll have the data to argue that, oh, you've got to come back and add a turn lane, or you've got to change the signal timing, because if you wait till after the fact. So it's just getting them in earlier. So I would hope that we can make that work. Are there any thoughts on, on either of these two? Kind of enhancing your environmental section or, or working with DLDOT in the, in the development process as opposed to the review?
Yeah, I think to take the first one, enhancing the environmental and sustainability section, it's come up in our, in our reviews here that, like, in the old comprehensive plans, we had sort of references made to a green Bethany initiative, which is loosely defined at best, and maybe has like a paragraph or something. So it's been some work of the Planning and Zoning Commission to try to start to establish what that thing would be. So I, for one, am interested in the notion of expanding and defining that as you proposed. And then I guess to just, I'll stay on the high horse here, but on the, like, working with DLDOT and traffic, I think, like you said, I think it's a little less of an ask, but, but I think it's certainly important to do. I know we in the town of Bethany have issues that are, that arise from the population growth outside of the town limits. And so you can see an ever increasing volume of traffic on Route 26 leading west from here. You know, that's only a matter of time before that continues to be or becomes more and more of an issue on Route 1 running north and south. So working with the, the other surrounding communities and DLDOT on potential solutions, whether those be, you know, expanded bike lanes or pedestrian paths or whatever they may be, getting that sort of thing into our comprehensive plan as early as possible and working with the DLDOT seems like a really smart way to go.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that. And another nice thing about it is just you have, you have a guy there, or I'm just saying guy, or guy, girl, just like when you're gonna get car insurance or, or home insurance or whatever, Realtor, and you're, you're talking to a friend, they go, oh, I know a guy. So now you'll know a guy at DLDOT, you know. So it's a nice contact to have, because they do work well as kind of a clearinghouse, because everyone knows someone at DLDOT. I know someone that, you know, drives one of the trucks, or someone that works in this or that department. But it's a good contact to have because they know all of them, so they can route your concerns. And that's the role that they're, that they're growing into quite nicely. So let's talk, or I'd rather say I should ask, a little bit about Bethany Beach. So in doing the demographic chapter, and I've just done the absolute highlights here, but so in 2010, the full account census showed Bethany Beach at 1,060 people. Now, there's a, there's definitely a margin for error in all of these things, and there's obviously some ambiguity in who considers themselves a full-time Bethany Beecher as opposed to someone that might split time or a snowbird. So there's more variability in your numbers than is common. But the one thing that's just a very, I wouldn't call it a trend, but it's a point of interest, is they're both have gone down. I can't imagine housing has gone down, but the population from 2010 to 2020 is a touch lower, about 100 people. And then...
BJ, that's, that cannot be correct. I mean, I'm not even a full-time resident here, but in the community that I live in, Bethany West, the difference between 2000, 2010 and 2020 is demonstrable. And so I only, I apologize for interjecting...
No, please.
But we cannot be, we can't be a slave to wherever that number came from, because it's, it just is clearly not, not correct.
Well, it could also be that, I mean, 2020 is a very momentous year, right? So a lot of stuff was in flux. So the difference between 2020 and 2022 could be, could be, you know, really remarkable. But it also could be that, like, people spend nine months here but still say that they're a Florida resident or a, you know, so, so that's the only counting people who actually identify as residents of Bethany Beach. But I also think that, hey, 1% of our entire population's in this room right now. It's pretty exciting, huh?
Well, now that's, I'm glad that you did interject, because that's precisely what I'm, what I'm kind of looking for, because with the numbers failing us, then, and frankly, even though we can track building permits and so on, there's nothing, unless you have a more scientific way, I don't know any way to determine your population other than the feeling of the people that live here, like, you know, have more people. Is it more of a year round than it has been? And it's not critical.
Actually, just at our, our town council hearing yesterday, Ms. Teeman pointed out about like the way that we're analyzing water usage permits. And so I think she might actually have some useful information on that end, like, in terms of historically speaking, how many people are, are spending more and more time here.
We, we can gauge it a little bit from, what I said yesterday was, we can gauge it a little bit based on our water consumption. And what we know is that our water consumption is up from 2019, but down from 2020, which was the year when we were in lockdown. And you know, you referred to it as being a significant year. It was a significant year, but you, and I think you could be right, that people may have moved here in 2020, and some, a few of them we know have stayed. But in 2020, if I were asked, you know, is this your permanent residence, even though I'm here for the duration, I would have said no. So there's, and like you, you said, Bruce, there's just so many variables. And they had a really tough time doing a census in the middle of a pandemic lockdown, so.
But we could, it sounds like we could compare 2010 water usage to 2022 water usage or something, get it...
I, I will see if that's, if that's possible. But I, like the rest of you, I think that there's got to be, those numbers cannot be accurate. But how we disprove that is... Yeah, we, we can take a look at that, too. We can take a look at that, too.
Yeah, 2020, we cannot depend, you know, I'm a full-time resident, and believe me, 2020 was nothing, I mean, I saw more people in 2020 in February than I've seen any time in my life. There's a lot of people just down here. So that's an anomaly, and I think we have to put an asterisk whenever we use any number like that. But there are more people coming full-time down here. I think for the most part, not so much Bethany, but the surrounding areas, there's a lot more, because Bethany is actually the resort, part of the resort community. And if you go to Ocean View and beyond, there are people that actually can afford to live down this area, but that are moving into that area full-time because housing prices are half, if not better than half, than there is within the city limits of, of Bethany. So I think it's, Bethany, in my opinion, I've been here since 85, not full-time, but since 85, Bethany will always have a core of X percent of people who are not going to live here full-time, but will have a house. And when they have houses here, they tend not to sell the house. They, they just tend to use it as a summer or an off-season, you know, residence. And I think somebody else said something about residency. There are a number of people that may claim Delaware as their residence, but they're not living down here. They're living in, because we feed from the Washington Metropolitan Area and the Philadelphia Area, a lot of, mainly the D.C., Maryland, Virginia. Those people will try to get Delaware residency because of the, the tax break they get, so.
BJ?
Yes, Mayor.
How is the Delaware Population Consortium estimates arrived at? Because the 2020 there looks more accurate to me than the 2020 census.
You're asking a black box question. Those guys, or those, that team, I don't know. I can look into it and get back to you.
They would tell you, but they'd have to kill you. They would tell you, but they'd have to kill you.
Yes, sir.
Actually, in the past, dealing with towns like, like Bethany Beach, the small towns, they actually don't really count them. They actually, it's a, use an algorithm, you know, based on the growth of the, of the area. So they don't actually come around and count the number of people. And the other complication that we have here in Bethany Beach is a lot of people have the same zip code that we do, but aren't within the town of Bethany Beach. And they're shocked that they're not Bethany Beach residents. So, so that's another little quirk in this. It's not, it's not uncommon for a lot of coastal communities to be unique in, from that aspect.
Yeah, Mayor, I mean, it came to me a little bit. When, when we, meaning me or my colleagues, do a population projection, you know, we'll just look at the historical trends, you know, from 1940, 1950, you grew by such a percent, and then we'll, we'll work out a higher range... out a higher range and a low range. And that's essentially what they do. But much more nuanced. So they build in morbidity and kind of fertility factors, you know, like this population is growing because everyone is 28 to 36, or this population is graying out, or this population is dying off. And then they also look at migration. People are coming in from different states to what spot. So they put in way more factors than you than you generally would and probably usually would end up in a much better result. But that kind of does lead me into my next point. Now, so you guys are talking about how the census and the projections don't fit you all that well because you have this very ample housing supply. And it's a matter of, you know, people choosing A or B to call this or that their residence. Now, other municipalities will look at this and say, you know, there's no way that we're going to go from 1,000 to 1,655 because we have 450 homes, Magnolia, the perfect circle town. It doesn't matter what their population projections say because that town is not growing. They're not going to grow beyond their perfect circle. They have as many houses as they have. Now, another town like, say, a Middletown or back in the early 2000s, the population projections didn't mean anything to them because if we build this, we're going to have 900 more people. If we choose not to, we're not going to. So the population projections are kind of working on if if our current policies more or less stay the same, this is what we might expect to see. So, you know, if Bethany Beach were to annex, you know, one of the huge developments close to you, then your population would go way up. So I think we've talked about this update a little bit. I do want to open it up again, though, because again, please, please, I'm in total learning mode. And I need to learn from you today. But I also need to learn what to look at while we're here for the day. So the last amendment was 2017. Are there any other, what are the the key issues that we haven't, I'm just talking top level, that we have that's happened since then? I know you, the streetscaping, that's new, right? The Loop Canal, is that new since?
It's been ongoing probably since since before 2017.
BJ, at this time, we are doing some major studies on the Loop Canal. And since the last...
Sorry. Since 2017, we have done a two-dimensional study on the Loop Canal. And we are are working with FEMA right now in order to 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 study it, to see if we can get some funding through FEMA. So there are things that are some concurrent things happening that maybe weren't happening back in 2017. So it is still of major importance to the town, that Loop Canal, that Steel Dam, very important.
I think this park was developed since 2017.
Right.
Central Park. The town recently purchased that Walchek demonitis property, which is two-something acres, five acres, 12 acres.
12 acres. I recall seeing that.
It's a number of acres. It's a number of acres of wetlands and open space.
Anything having to do with Ocean View, Sussex County?
I would I would say traffic is is a major concern. And we're looking at a traffic study in the near future. And so that would concern Ocean View and how people move from the west side of the highway to the east side of the to the east side of the highway.
And pedestrian safety.
Pedestrian safety. We've had some fatalities. And we so we're definitely that's a major concern here.
Yes, the crosswalks of all, many of the crosswalks across Route 1 have been given lighted signals. But there's probably still more to do there. Talking about a pedestrian path on Collins Street.
Yeah, I read that.
And on Kent, yeah, Collins and Kent.
What I'm what I'm trying to edge up to is, and I do, I truly appreciate you're cluing me into some of these things. But what I'm trying to warm up to is, is this was kind of when we scoped this project, it was, you know, an update, go through, please update our tables, please give us better maps, please, you know, kind of reorganize it.
Garment off the dashboard.
What's that?
Take the garment off the dashboard.
Yeah, exactly.
Make it look like we didn't print out a MapQuest map.
And and we're happy to do that. But I'm trying to, I'm just trying to fish around and see, is this, is that what we're doing here? Or is there is there more to it? So from what you're saying, the key issues, there are things that have changed are are kind of incremental. But we'll find out now. So this is the next couple of maps. This is just a map of where your town is. Now, Bethany Beach and frankly, Ocean View are are unique in my, what I thought was fair experience, but must be pretty limited since they're both right here back to back. Neither of you have any annexation areas, areas of concern. Seems like any ambitions be outside of your current boundaries. Is that is that accurate?
Is the National Guard. And we approached them the last time we did the update, and they were not interested in becoming part of the town.
So the National Guard is happy where they are. Obviously, you've got Sea Colony.
That's outside the town.
Yeah. So they're not, no interest there. I'm not positing.
They're in the county.
Well, I mean, but annexation is when often it's usually undeveloped areas. Towns will say, oh, we're going to annex in this undeveloped area. And then we're going to have a development built on it. Less commonly, but not unheard of, is for towns that are surrounded by already developed areas, perhaps that have failing septic or have water, saltwater intrusion, or any number of things, or feel like they don't have enough police service. And I'm not advocating for this at all. But sometimes those, the town will approach those properties and say, hey, why don't you come into town? We've got these services and we've got water. Or the property owners, in some cases, will petition. So I'm in no way trying to complicate your plan. I'm just saying that it is fairly unique for two towns. And neither of them have any territorial ambition. So and I'm perfectly happy that way. I just wanted to double check and make sure that that's what that's how it is.
There was, when Sea Colony was first built, they wanted to become to be annexed by Bethany Beach. And we said, no. Sea Salt Pond has approached us many times about being annexed. And we've said, no. They want they we do provide them with water. But they would like beach tags and trolley service and everything else, parking permits. And these are, you know, Bethany Beach residents are just content to stay Bethany Beach.
Okay, that's perfectly perfectly fine.
You know, BJ, on the same, what she was talking about, can you can you imagine if Sea Colony was part of the town? And there's so many people there that actually, and most of them don't live there year round, they'd be the ones directing the future of the town and not necessarily the residents.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we have the beginnings of a policy on future annexation and growth, that Bethany Beach is content within its borders and provide is happy to provide a superior level of service to its residents. And, yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
I was just going to say, the only one that we were interested in was the National Guard. And that was if the if the state or at any time relinquished that property, we didn't want it to become another Sea Colony, we wanted control over it. That was the thinking behind that. But that didn't pan out.
Okay. A possible, and this will be a more granular discussion, but a possible way to approach that would be to call that an area of concern. Since annexation doesn't seem to be a big thing here, I won't go into a long drawn out thing about it. But let's just pretend, this is hypothetical for anyone listening. If you wanted to annex Sea Colony, and you decided you wanted to tomorrow, you couldn't. Because on your, you don't even have a growth in annexation map. But if you had one, unless they were already an area that showed up as someplace we would like to annex, then you're powerless to do so. So again, that's totally hypothetical. It's just a discussion point. But something that towns will sometimes also do is show areas as an area of concern. Now, that's saying that we have no, we're not interested in annexing you. Even if we changed our mind and said we wanted to annex you, we still can't because you're not shown as an annexation area. You're only shown as an area of concern. But what that does do, like we were talking about the plan, providing the basis and the foundation for lots of stuff, is intergovernmental coordination, probably a memorandum of understanding. You could potentially get on record with the National Guard saying, you know, if the disposition of this property changes, or if you have, if you're going to sell to a developer or a redeveloper, or if the state's going to sell, hey, we would like a heads up. We'd like to know before it shows up on your next agenda. So we can consider our options. Because as you say, and I'm not stating the town's position, but should that facility no longer be in use or go on the market, perhaps then you'd be more interested in annexing it. So you could regulate it how you wanted to before it got developed in a way that wouldn't help you. So that's just something to think about. But I'm I'm pleased that the town is content with the vision that it's established. So probably one more bar for us to pass here, and to keeping this as simple and fun, is our future land use. So we've talked about this quite a bit in the the lead up discussion. Now, this is just a draft. But if this is looking, and I'm not, I'm not going to take sign off on this now or not. But are there, I know you've got one rezoning on the on the docket today or just done. But is there much changing? Or are you pretty happy with how your future land use is?
BJ, I've been on this commission quite a while. We have a very mature and strong zoning code. The last major change we made was to accommodate a hotel that went in. There there are a few areas that because of history or whatever, have unique zoning versus larger, larger areas on the on the west side of 20, of 1, that's an R2. That's a much larger, 7,000 square feet per lot. There are little pockets where there are 5,000. In the past, we investigated trying to regularize that and found that the the community was not interested in doing that. And it had no major impact on on the zoning. So I didn't mean to speak before the chairman, but this is pretty well built out. And it's pretty much steady as you go, I think is a fair comment, both now and and for the future.
Okay, that's, sorry, go ahead.
This, we know this map is is not correct. Right? I think I think Terry had a copy of it earlier because the area that was just rezoned, you've you've rezoned Stewart's Watch in there as green space. It's it's residential. Just there's some, there's some other sections on this map.
I'm sure that, yeah, this is a version, I don't know, it's either a week old or two days old. I've been getting them fast and furious.
Okay.
From Nicole. I'm confident that there's, you know, little parcels that need to be changed here and there. What I'm, like, I should have articulated my question better is, are you happy with the character of the town's layout? And so I'll just give you some kind of the typical discussions that you might have in other towns, like, so we just had the COVID thing. So some towns have said, oh, you know, maybe we should allow, now, obviously, anyone can work from home, but maybe we should let people put a an office in their garage or on their second floor. But, you know, if I'm a lawyer or whatever professional service, then I might need to have someone park out in front of my house while they run inside. Or kind of a more common example would be, we want to let people have home-based businesses or limited retail, or this area here, we've got lots of daycares. So do we want to call this mixed use or neighborhood, a neighborhood zone where you mostly live there, but whatever. And so I'm not pushing that. And at least you have, like, as Mr. Gahn has said, you have an established and mature kind of land use here. I'm just trying to gauge, is there is there much changing? And what I'm hearing so far is we have to go through with a magnifying glass and make sure they're the right colors. But...
Some of the issues you just brought out are well defined in our code. So about businesses and and that kind of stuff, it's well defined in our code.
Okay.
Can I, just at the risk of wading into controversial waters here, I do think there is an issue, not not necessarily specifically in Bethany, but throughout the coastal communities of workforce housing. And we've talked a lot about like affordable housing on the Planning and Commission. And it starts with like, well, there's nothing we can really do to solve it. But I I happen to think that there are simple zoning codes you could look at that might allow, say, in a specific neighborhood or a specific area that might not currently be defined on this map, where you could allow someone to have a, I don't know, apartment over a garage, which is currently not allowed in any zone, but that would allow for, you know, summer, a summer employee to rent that cottage or something like that. So I'm not saying we're going to solve that today, or maybe maybe never change the map with that. But I think it is something that we could consider in the future because that adds to daily trips. You know, if you look at all the people who work in town right now, they drive in from like Laurel. So if you talk about traffic on 26, you know, how do you how do you start to ease that? I think you have to look at all policies to make that happen. So.
We'll definitely have those discussions when we when we get into housing. Kind of an ancillary to that is what people call granny flats or in-law suites.
It may not have a lot of popular support.
No, it may not. All right. So good yet. So so far, we've passed both tests that there's not, we're not growing, and we're happy with the stable character of the town, which frankly, is wonderful. That's exactly what I was kind of hoping for coming down. Because that means that without wrestling with these issues, which are typically the more time consuming ones, that does give us free us up a little bit to work on the environmental chapter, the sustainability, the transportation, which are the issues that I keep hearing coming back as we're having this discussion. So existing land use, I'm just going to walk you through the maps. I'm going to try to wrap up here pretty quick because I've been going for a while. But I'll walk you through the map series that we've developed. This is existing land use. And I've I've already been on and on about existing land uses, what you look at when you what you see when you look at it. Future land use is what you want to see when you look at it in 20 years. And we've already been going back and forth on this one quite a bit. Environmental features, isn't the easiest to see?
Particular map that you have, a number of them. I'm sure you're really looking at the red town. But there's a couple of protected land use in March. These are areas that are excellent ground, well, recharge potential, and of course, within those are some couple of wellheads. So these are spots where some coastal communities have suffered from saltwater intrusion. Other of them are protected, and I'm sure it looks like they are. They'll cover more than six spots. Weapons, some of the more interesting, however, is the flood, which I'm looking at why I'm doing the map for, because yes, the answer is yes.
BJ?
Yes.
You know, the all of our wells, I think we were the only town or the municipality in Delaware that has a saltwater intrusion monitoring system. And it monitors, it's over there by the Parkwood entrance to the beach. And I think it's a pretty cool thing because the Environmental Protection Agency brought a whole group here a couple of years ago to take a look at it in the hopes that other communities would adopt it.
That's fantastic to know. That's fantastic to know. Roads and boundaries, you're familiar with the roads. Now, we also can, if you, if you, no one's got eyes like this. But if you zoom in, it'll show you where the sidewalks are and so on, which is another, and I know that your pedestrian plan makes note of this also. But it's easy to see where there's little gaps. Like big projects are expensive and no one wants that, you know, forty-seven million dollar, thirty-year, I mean, that would be nice at some point. But if you can just find the little spot, what, no one can walk from here to here because of X, Y, and Z. So I, I'll try to, I'll try to wrap up right here. As I was talking about, there's the positional statements. And probably our first order of business as we go through working together, we'll be ironing those out in a kind of a fast and furious wordsmithing session. And everything is up for, is up for grabs until it's, until the very end. So position on population growth, I think that, here, let's just jump ahead. You guys have seen this. These are the ones that you have to actually put words to, the ones that are underlined. The others are kind of built into the plan. And so these are the current visions. And so that's kind of where I'll end is the only challenging, well, the most challenging thing so far was although it's been a great help that the town has gone through their previous plan and laid it out and started updating it and got it to a pretty good spot before you called us, is that I don't necessarily know what is old and what is new without checking with everybody. So were these 2005? Is this all 2005 language that was brought forward? Or is this recently developed language by the group as you began the update process? And it doesn't really matter which, I just, I just care to know if they're both still relevant. Because what I'll, I'll do is I'll go through and I'll, I'll do template boilerplate language for you and then let you edit it or let the group edit it so we're not everyone trying to craft their own statements. But I'm trying to use these as the foundational pieces. So I guess I'm just asking, is this still true?
These are, these are the old statements from 2005 or 2017. We had a notion of when we went through and updated the, the comprehensive plan, like that draft that we've been working on, to actually find out what we wrote in the draft and then come back and update the vision statements to match those things. So we kind of went through it more like piece by piece. And I don't think we ever came back to, to these current visions.
Okay, well, we don't have to wordsmith them now for sure. But I'm, I'm just kind of looking for a gentle consensus. Is this still warm or is something, has something changed since?
I would think for the most part, the vision is consistent with what the town wants. I mean, if the, if the commissioners or the town council ultimately want to modify that, that'll happen. But yeah, that's, that's probably, that's what we reviewed the document essentially on these visions here.
But these are still a good starting point.
I feel like our vision for electronic government's a little antiquated, the idea that we even have one.
And then here are the others, a vision for business. Business for electronic, a vision for electronic government?
Yeah, I'm not, personally not sure that we actually need a spelled-out vision for an electronic government.
Yeah, that could, yeah.
Yeah, in 2022.
So that's where, that's where I'm at. The one, I meant to stress this earlier, but how can we work with you going forward? As I say, there's the, we've got three, four months to kind of push through a lot of this language and that's been written and, and get it through the Planning Commission review. I'm happy to come down, you know, now and again, but I can't get, I can't get the, the team down here on Saturday mornings because most of us live in Pennsylvania, frankly.
Yeah, we're willing, and I talked to Terry two months ago. Whatever is best for you and your team during the week. And I know Mondays and Fridays are terrible to come down US1. So unless you can have a ten-year plan to fix that for us, whatever days that you would like, we'll try to get as many people here as we can. For the most part, I think the commissioners are flexible. I would also like to invite the town council to sit in on these also because it will be able to enhance their final review and, and approval of what plan they'd like to send forward to the state. So I'm sort of, you know, that's sort of the position. And so we are flexible to your schedule.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, John.
Can we add to that the possibility of virtual, virtual meeting capability so that?
Sure, like a Zoom.
If someone isn't physically here, they could call in or Skype in or any, anybody could do that. But can we try to make that part of the, part of the?
I'd have to ask Will for, on our side. Can you set up a Zoom for the, these participants? I'm not so much, I'm not on those things since these are not executive sessions. I don't know what you call it, work sessions. I don't think we have to provide it for everybody, do we? So I think it's just the people that are, I mean, general public doesn't have to have access to that, do they?
I don't think so.
I'll ask the mayor.
There are some new rules in FOIA that have just been passed by the state. And I think if you have any type of virtual meeting with a body like this, you have to have an anchor location and you also have to provide, you see, right now, because we meet together here, the council, we don't have to provide a, a way for people who are watching to comment.
Okay.
But if you have, if you have a virtual meeting of a body and any one person is meeting virtually, you have to provide the opportunity for the public to comment as well.
Okay, so can we provide, yeah, because I didn't want to get into people from the outside that, you know, are, are normal citizens to, to involve themselves until we actually have a public hearing.
Right, and, and part of it too is the, the technology aspect of it, you know, the commenting and everything too.
Yeah, Will, do you have a, can you provide that to us or for us?
We do not have Zoom fully integrated within the broadcast system as of yet. It is a project I am working on and we have begun testing, but it's not fully integrated yet. The previous Zoom capability we had was very jury-rigged. And I'm, I would rather not use that feature. Now, if we are required to implement commenting, you know, public commenting capability, that there's another monkey wrench. So, and that I was not aware of, so thank you for the new information.
Mr. Chairman, I'll try to make every meeting in person.
That answered that question, I think.
Well, kind of, I mean, we can leave the, we can iron out the details. What we, what I had thought coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Because as you can see now, I'm kind of fishing for back and forth. But it's hard to, to get that workshop, kind of like carry the map around and mark it up in, in this setting. So I had spoken to Terry briefly, although she didn't know the answer, was at least for some of the meetings, can we work with a working group? Could we have some sub-quorum member of a couple commissioners and a couple of council people that have an interest in a particular chapter? So we can get it 90% of the way there. And then rather than coming to every, rather than coming to every monthly meeting and kind of trying to page through them as I stand up here, to have, to maybe come to every second or third for kind of progress updates as we work through the review with, with the people that are interested.
Do you have a, a number of people in mind that you can work with, you know, manageable?
And does that work, is that okay with FOIA? Like if the meetings are, if the?
Well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, if you didn't have, you know your own laws better than I do. But if you don't have a quorum of the council and you, or you don't have a quorum of the Planning Commission and you're just having working meetings with your consultant, then that's not.
Yeah, we can do that.
That's not a public meeting.
So what, what's a manageable number for you?
Number of?
People. I mean, do you want four, five?
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay. I, I think that's not a bad idea. The more people, the, the longer it takes to get anything done.
And it can be a rotating group also, you know, it doesn't have to be the same.
Well, I'd like some consistency. And so if we have the same people and we report back and then have everybody together occasionally, we'll be, I think we can do that. Do the commissioners have any comment on that? I'm leaning toward, that's fine with me.
I think it makes sense. I mean, there's, there's, you're going to have, a lot of it's going to be kind of communicating the past year of work that was done so that BJ has a sense of what we were intending to say when we, when we did that work. So probably to me, seems unnecessary to do that on Saturday mornings for two hours to drag their team down here for Saturday mornings, you know.
I agree, so.
I have, I have a question. Are we working from what we put forth before? Or does BJ, do you have a template for us that we put in what we have done into that?
I have the template that, that the, the town had worked on. And I've, for the, probably 80% of it, it's pretty close, you know, to being ready to look at. But I want to go back through and put in the goals and policy statements. Because I didn't know what I was, what you guys were going to say today. Oh, we want to grow or we don't want to grow. So I needed to get that, beginnings of that so I wouldn't give you a draft that was presumptuous. But I would think in August, we should have, well, the easiest way would probably be about three or four chapters every month. So in August, we take care of the demographics and the town services and some of the more preliminary, more preliminary ones while perhaps hearing from DLDOT. And then in September, we go through housing and future land use and environmental, or not environmental, economic development while the bulk of the time is spent with Jen Wright's talking about the sustainability. And then, you know, the, the kind of the big two in your case that would finish last would be transportation and the environmental sustainability one, which will kind of tie everything together. And then, then you have your document in November or December to fit our, to fit our schedule. You know, also our schedule is, is, is tight. I wouldn't be surprised, I don't want to start out this way, but it might be easier i- if we get into the process and are making real solid progress to, to ask for another three months rather than, than beat our heads against a wall trying to, to make it. But I'm sure we can accomplish it either way.
Okay, well, we'll do that. I have some commissioners and a councilperson, there's two that I would recommend. But if they, if somebody would like to serve on that before I make any recommendations, I'll hear you. It's going to be some, be some good work. Well, I'd just give you my recommendations. This is going to be a little bit democratic. I think Mark ought to be on it because he does a fine job of, you know, and he has a younger brain than the rest of us. Our liaison with the council should be on. I'd like to request Lou Kilmer from the town council because Lou's got more experience than anybody has on, on this. So that's one, two, three. One, two, three. John?
Mr. Chairman, if Mark will have me, I'd be on his team.
You want to be on it?
Sure.
But we saw how much you helped Mark and he did such a great job, so.
You know, you know the level of effort that's going to be coming forward, going forward, but.
So that's, that's for, as a chairman, I think I have to be part of the group, at least from a, a secondary standpoint, so I'll be there. Is that all right with everyone? Okay.
And as, and as BJ pointed out, it can be a rolling group. So if there are things that someone is particularly interested in.
Well, that's, yeah, that's a good idea. You know, I know we're going to, we're going to ask Scott not to attend the environmental portion because he's.
Not about workforce housing, for sure.
Pardon me. Yes, that's a good idea. Do you have a preference of when? Or just, you can work, you can work it out with Terry, I guess, because Terry? I'm always available. Anybody have, Mark, you're still working, so.
I can be flexible.
And John, you're still traveling, so.
Good at it.
Lou, yeah, not, not during church, no church in the morning times, right?
No, but I also do a lot of other things.
Okay. Okay. So when do you want to, when did you want to start, BJ? Yeah, it'd be fine. Yeah, and if, if the people can't make it, you know, we'll either fill in or we'll just do best we can for the most part. But we're, we're, we'll be a slave to your requirements.
We just coordinate schedules with?
Yeah, Terry, you'll coordinate that for us, Terry? Yeah, and she'll be part of the group also.
I'll work with BJ and we'll try to get like, you know, I know John's probably coming the furthest and after that BJ. So we'll try to get a day that's good for both of them. And it might be like a, like a Tuesday or a Thursday when you're coming down here anyway, you know, or, or before you leave. And if that's, we'll, we'll try to work it out. And then, and then we'll try to get a set schedule wherever, we all know it's going to be on a certain day.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I didn't quite gather that part. Yeah, like I say, we're, we're at your disposal. But if, one of the thoughts, if we were having this less formal working group, was is it possible that we Zoom in or that we meet virtually? Or would you prefer?
It's fine too. And that probably would be possible to Zoom, to Zoom in in a working group. But if you're having a public meeting and you have to have public comment, that's when Will has an issue, right?
That's what we're trying to get, trying to avoid, yeah.
Yep.
So a working group Zoom meeting may be fine.
Yeah. I did have one question for you. You said that, or maybe I misunderstood you, BJ. Did you say we need a sign-off from Ocean View?
Yeah, yeah, you do. They don't have to, yeah, I would think so. I would, they probably during their last planning process, do they not send the town a letter saying, you know, this is our, this is our future land use plan? You know, please let us know if you have any objections. And typically you say, oh, we've reviewed your plan, looks good to us, and that's it.
Did we ever, Ocean View ever submit us their plan? I went to Ocean View. I remember, and they asked you why you were there. And, yeah, they asked me why I was there, number one. And then, you know, and then because, you know, that's a small town. So I mean, it's, who are you and why are you here, that kind of thing? So, yeah, I, I did our part, but it's, it's a one-way. No one's talking to us. We just follow the, the rules. And, but you know, it's really like, in this case, a tale of two cities. It really is, there's not much in common between us.
Okay.
So what, so had, did Ocean View, has Ocean View submitted their plan to you, Rosary?
We've never approved theirs.
I guess my question was, I'm sort of like, well, wait a minute.
Well, then you, then possibly you don't. It's just a matter of, it's a public meeting, but what, what hill do you want to die on? Chances are you send them a letter and they'll send one back and then, you know.
And it could be an interview letter. I, I also went to the next town, Millville, because they all, basically all feed into this area. Again, it was a one-way thing. I was there, they were naked and come here. So I don't know how valuable that is, but you know, that's, that's life in the.
So, um, I don't know how valuable that is, but, um, you know, that's, that's life in the, in the current world.
I have a.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, is, um, is it possible since there'll be the working group and you'll be working on different chapters each month? So that we're kept informed? Could we see the finished chapters so that we don't have to read the whole thing at once?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would, it would save time, I think. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, um, I just need some steering commands. I always need steering commands, but, um, BJ, my view of this whole effort is, um, for us, steady as you go. We, we have been doing, this is not our first rodeo on the, uh, a comprehensive plan. And the goals that we set out, that the town set out many years ago certainly need to be reviewed and tweaked, but they, uh, there haven't been any serious mid-course corrections or whatever. So, um, for me, look, going forward into these working groups, did I understand you correctly to say that, um, the vision, the current visions that you put in your handout would be a good starting point for us because whether they were old, current or future, they're, they're pretty much the same. I don't see differences. Is that a good place for me to start?
That's your prerogative. I just, you know, we, we had staff level conversations. I've spoken with your town manager, your assistant town manager, yours, you know, the, the town management team and always had the impression, very similar to what you're saying, that this was going to be an update, steady as you go. But I didn't want to presume that until I spoke to the elected representatives and so on. So, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to hear you saying what you're saying.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask one more question? Um, you, you made a point earlier to say that we needed to be careful of the language we use in terms of mandatory or aspirational. And, um, I noticed that in Rehoboth Beach, they made it a point to put something in the beginning of their plan that talked about the difference between the mandatory things that they were undertaking and the aspirational. For this reason, I think they ran into a problem last time. Um, they had something in their comprehensive plan that, and I don't know the entire details, but when Bell Haven went to now build a new hotel there, they, there was something in there that was more aspirational and they said that they based their plan on that. And the board of adjustment agreed with them and said that the, the council, the commission should have done that because it was in the plan. So this time they made it def, they made, um, like a preface in the beginning written by the attorney saying that there was a difference in there. I'm, I think I'll find it for you and I can send it to you.
What town is that again?
Rehoboth Beach. And they, it was in the Cape Gazette too, just about a week ago, that, the approval of the plan.
And that's come up for discussion in Bethany also, kind of the giant houses concept, right?
Sorry?
Hasn't like the big houses or the supersized house been an issue here?
This one had to do with the, the hotel, the new hotel that's going in Bell Haven. And something that they were able to use against the commission, uh, to be able to get something more than they would have gotten. Because it was in, the way it was worded in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, that's, that's happened.
And BJ, what, you mentioned something, um, our, our code is very specific about building structures, size, lot coverage, uh, how tall they can be. So, I mean, that, that's pretty well spelled out in our, in our town code, uh, so.
Well, that's, that's the circular firing squad you run into is your, your future land use and your plan in form of your zoning code. So within eighteen months of adopting your new plan, ostensibly you'll have to adjust or tweak or at least re-adopt your zoning ordinance to be in compliance with the plan. So the plan is the horse and the zoning code is the cart, right? So if, in another hypothetical example, you had a zoning code that you were very happy with, but in your new plan that we're writing now, the, the future land use thing said, you know, we would welcome fourteen bedroom houses to make it easier to have family reunions, then, and then you were sued and they said, this is what the plan says. And you said, well, this is what the code says. They would say, yeah. And you're required to make your code line up with your plan. So somewhere in the code should be a spot for fourteen bedroom houses if you're talking about it in the plan. So that's why you try to be vague in the plan and specific in the code to a point.
Doesn't the code, you know, um, have priority over a comprehensive plan? If there's, if there is a, um, a different opinion.
I mean, that would be something you would have to, it would probably get fought out.
I would think that would have the, the force of law.
If, but if their future land use map showed red, showed commercial, then the zoning code would have to be commercial.
Again, Bethany Beach is unique this way because we don't have a lot of land to be developed. It's, it's built out, basically. So it's not like we have to worry about, you know, a big, a big, uh, development coming in or there is no place to put it. And most of the construction in our, in our community, in our ripdowns and replacements and not, you know, not building lot. There's few obvious exceptions, but most of that is, is, uh, renewal of existing structures.
And I, and we're having an interesting conversation that probably doesn't, probably not gonna come into play in your plan. Cause as you're saying, as, uh, as Mr. Gunn has said, it's, it's, it's a well-established code. But that was a great question you asked about, uh, would the code have preeminence? And, uh, I mean, that's what, that's why these last two towns have gone to court. So it's pretty much what you're talking about is they've said, no, this is our zoning code. And the plaintiff said, yeah, but this is your comprehensive plan and you're, you're rolling. If you, if you've caused that ambiguity, then you're forcing someone else to make the decision for you. Which is why you try to be as, uh, you know, that's why you try to stay with yellows and reds and then to regulate with the zoning code.
I think I'm gonna, um, summarize what we have. Uh, people are gonna, we're gonna have a little work, working group. Terry, you'll be our contact with, uh, BJ and she'll, uh, tell us what we're supposed to do, when we're supposed to be there. And, um, then we can have a lot of these discussions we're having right now. Um, excuse me, at that point. It simplified. That's what we have going at this point. And BJ, thank you so much. Appreciate it. You know, you've been very helpful and, uh, we'll let you fight the traffic home. Oh, there you go. Look at you. And that's exactly what this town's all about. You're taking, you know, we'll just put a picture of that in, uh, our tenure plan. And that's what we'd like it to stay and look like. No cars, so, so Scott has his greenness.
Yes, thank you.
And a lot of plants. So, uh.
Nine cars, what's left there?
We, uh, we have one more item, but I, I think, um, the commissioners will need, you know, a five-minute break.
Please.
Yeah, please. So we're gonna take a five-minute break, five minutes only, and, uh, we'll come back. Thank you.
Okay, the meeting's back in order. We have one item, old business. Hopefully, it will be a fairly quick discussion today, since it's such a beautiful day in Bethany Beach. The old business is continue our discussion on the tree and penalties of the tree provision we're working on. Mark and John have done a fine job of providing a draft. Buddy has a copy of the draft, or at least has seen it. And with that, I will turn this over to Mark to open the discussion and run this particular element.
Okay, thank you. So just for background purposes, we've talked about a lot of these things over the last few months, but the most recent application that we discussed at the last meeting and previous meeting, particularly around clearing of lots, minor subdivision work. And I think the takeaway homework assignment for us was to look at opportunities to either tighten that, refine those sections to, you know, help avoid or provide some clarity going forward. So just starting this process, and just to point out, this is definitely a work in progress. This was me essentially kind of combing through these two sections and looking for ways to cross-reference and, you know, potentially just, again, provide, ensure that there's some clarity in those areas. Open to any suggestions, obviously, and I think we'll probably need another few weeks to tighten this up and do some additional referencing or including examples and things like that. So the first section on Chapter 410, Subdivision of Land, I think one thing that I, you know, put in here for terminology under definitions, we don't define what improved and unimproved is. And so Googling around and, you know, looking at other jurisdictions, this sort of isn't the same across the board. So for clarity purposes, we may want to consider doing that. I've seen in most instances, improved is anything that has a structure on it that would require some level of maintenance of the grounds. It doesn't matter if utilities are terminated, but if utilities are at the curb or at the street, that's also considered improved, even if there's not a dwelling on it or a structure. So these are some differences that I've come across. I think our, what we were using as our, you know, guide through this, I think, was unimproved because, you know, in this example, the utilities were disconnected. So anyway, Susan and I had shared an email with you, you may not have gotten to it, but unless I missed it, I didn't see where we define it, and we use improved and unimproved several times throughout the code in lots of sections. So that was just one thing, you know, for discussion purposes.
Yeah, I don't think we have a definition per se. We've just, in general, because there are some developments where they put the utilities in, but it's considered an unimproved lot.
Right.
So I always considered it, and it's not written out, that an unimproved lot was one without any structures that would need to be maintained.
Right.
And you cannot have accessory structures without a main structure. So basically, if you haven't built anything on the property, it's an unimproved lot.
Okay.
I think we, that tailors with how we look at assessments, because we don't, if there's nothing built on the lot, it's not assessed the same as, it's assessed as an unimproved lot.
Susan, can we stay on this subject for a moment? Because in the case of, whatever it was, 610 Fifth Avenue, we went into the beginning of that, that since the house had been, all the utilities had been disconnected, that it was an unimproved lot. And if I understand correctly, when the developer challenged it, whatever forum you were before, that the judge found that to be an improved lot. And that, let me just finish my sentence. And that allowed the developer a defense as to why they clear-cut things.
The developer had an attorney who gave him an opinion of it having water and sewer. My opinion is that if it doesn't have a house on it, it's an unimproved lot. His attorney's opinion was, no matter what, it has water, it has sewer. I made the case that actually, no, it didn't have water and sewer, they had been cut. So, and that was not considered, the judge, either, it didn't come out as clearly as it should have for the judge to consider. But this person's attorney, if we write a definition, that will be whatever the town, the town defines it this way. And I think basically, the way that I've always considered is without a structure. It's an unimproved lot.
Would it then, from your standpoint, would it be helpful if we were to consider definitions of unimproved and improved? Would that, would that be a clarification that would be of value to you and your determinations?
Yes, yes. I think, I think having them, I'm always for definitions. You can find much of the code simplified by reading the definitions. You always go to the definitions. But having a definition in there saying, no, this is how the town looks at this, would always be helpful.
And that would close a loophole.
Yeah.
Stick with me, if you will. The property we were just talking about had a structure on it. The utilities had been cut off, and it was in fact going to be demolished, and was demolished. But you said, would that be considered, I mean, that, since it had a building on it, that's an improved lot? Then what, they cut off, I'm just trying to drill down as to how we define this. Once those utilities were cut off, it became an unimproved lot.
No, I don't want to base it on utilities. I wouldn't do that because, because I believe, and I think Turtle Walk has the utilities up to the curb as it was developed. So even an empty lot there, is, we, our assessment of it in our taxes is unimproved. So I just want to look at these lots, my opinion would be to look at them as, an unimproved lot has no built structure or on it that requires any kind of maintenance.
Okay.
You know, because I don't want to get into, well, you have to cut the grass, you know. It's just, it's just whether it's built upon or not.
No, I have one other question. If there was a house on there that was just improved, and it's taken off, is that still considered an approved, improved lot?
No, because it'll change how we assess their taxes.
Okay, so if someone owns their property and they take their house off, then it is unimproved and they could...
They, right, and I typically have to let, let the town know that this house is not there, they're not building for a year, it changes the way they assess it.
Okay.
And then that land can just become its own natural vegetated state without maintenance?
No, they have to cut the, we have something in the code that says that your lot has to look like the rest of the lots in the neighborhood.
Best lot, you have to cut grass.
Right? You can't, because we had the one guy over in the canal who was going to put, I forget, something all over, he was going to kill everything.
Yeah, he killed the envy.
And leave it.
He burnt it.
And we put something in there that said, no, if you have pine needles, you have to have pine needles. If you have, you know, grass, it has to be grassed. So we have, we have lot maintenance, but not, that has nothing to do with improved or unimproved.
So Susan, if it's, let's see, how do I want to say this? Is it the structure that defines the unimproved versus the, the structure only?
Yeah.
So if I have a lot next to my house that I own, and I want to put a rain garden and, excuse me, beautiful flowers or whatever, that would still be an unimproved lot?
Yeah, because you would not be, you would not be assessed for that.
Okay.
They wouldn't come and tax your flowers.
Got it. I hope not.
Susan, suppose somebody put a shed on that lot?
You can't, you can't. Accessory structures have to be an accessory to something.
What if they were really nice flowers?
Yeah.
Look how beautiful it is outside. We don't have time for that.
I knew if I were in this meeting for two hours, we'd have a problem.
Okay, so, so the action item here, I'll take a stab at this definition, share it with you maybe, if that's okay, before our next, before August meeting, and we'll, we'll tune this up for the group to review definition.
We're good.
Did that eventually get approved?
At the last planning meeting, their request to subdivide it into three lots was approved. They had provided the planning commission with a tree replacement plan, and it was approved as meeting all of the requirements that are in the code. And the gentleman for that company came and answered lots of questions at the same time on how they picked the trees and where they placed them and all that.
All right, thank you.
If I could add, though, to your question, the answer. One of the impetus for what we're doing today grew out of that whole situation in terms of caliper of the trees, the choice of trees, and all which we haven't gotten to. So he did get his approval. But hopefully, we won't have a repeat of that in the future, once we work our way through all of what we're discussing now, provide it to the town council on whether the town council approves it or not.
Thank you. I was at that first meeting, I missed the second one, so thank you.
Mark? Yes. Okay, Chapter 507 Trees, Article 3, Remove all trees on unimproved lots within subdivisions and/or planned residential developments. This one, we started to discuss, I think I questioned it last meeting, but definitions again, the caliber dimension. We have two definitions for essentially trees within this section. One is that caliper dimension, and then the other is just, I think, trees and replacement trees. So maybe there's three. But in this one, digging into sort of standards a bit, I think what I've found is the outside diameter measurement of a trunk of tree at a vertical distance of six inches above the soil is the sort of standard, six inches above the soil are root ball, the nursery standard. So when we're speaking about replacement trees, they're being measured at six inches above from the nursery standpoint, not at four and a half feet above. So I think there's a distinction here between young trees or new trees that are being put in versus mature trees for the purposes of, you know, the replenishment plan or any of the things that are being considered. It's just, to me, the definitions are confusing in how they're written in this section. And this was just an attempt to clarify that replacement tied to the caliper. We already mentioned, also further back in that section, the height of the tree. So in Section 507-12, we, I wrote here at the bottom for discussion, consider incorporating the minimum caliber size and height from Section 507-12 within that definition, where it states, something, 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 the tree shall have a caliper dimension of three inches or more and be at least 10 feet in height. And so I think if we're defining some of these measurements in the definition, either move that to the definition or tie the section to it in that definition, so that it just gives somebody, it's buried in the last, the last paragraph, I think, in that, in this article. So that was just, again, a recommendation here to potentially tighten this up. As I mentioned, on the six inches above the soil, so what I've seen is industry standards for measuring a mature tree is the four and a half feet height. I've seen it at five feet as well, but we use four and a half feet above grade. This coordinates with our definition of tree included in this article. But for replacement or new trees, we don't define what that is. So again, it's just, it's probably nuanced, but it's being specific then and connecting it to the later section in that chapter.
Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking on page two of this draft for discussion, half, the middle of the page. We've asked, raised the question, should we include a recommended species list? And we don't have an answer to that. But the thinking behind it was, well, I don't even know if there is somewhere in Delaware sort of a recommendation of, for this kind, for this location, here are the types of trees that flourish here, whether it's bald cypress or whatever. But whether or not that would make, would be helpful so as to maybe broaden the choice that a developer will make, because right now, alls they do is they pick pine trees. And...
Pinokes.
Yeah, pin oak. Right, well, I don't know if that's a pine tree or not, probably not, but...
Pin oak.
Kind of like the Fourth, kind of like the Fourth of July, I understand. But I just, we put that out there for people to think about, and Susan, you in particular, to, if you think that that would be of value, if we can find a list or something of recommended, and whether we should make it part of, part of this, or simply as a resource for people to, to go look at and maybe decide.
Well, if it's recommended, it'll be a source, you know, a recommendation. That's not a requirement, so, you know, I mean, we could do that, but, everybody has a different taste.
I think it comes down to part of, you know, the town, the sort of town aesthetics with, related to vegetation. I know that we don't necessarily have requirements for sort of street trees, like Rehoboth has a section where, you know, they include small, medium, and large trees, species in their, you know, in their chapter, that those are the only ones that could happen within that section. But that's a different character of their town, and, you know, very important, it doesn't go on to say, you know, that they have to use those trees within their property boundaries. But, so I don't know if, you know, if it was more to, you know, to sort of identify opportunities for trees that would either thrive or be appropriate here that are other than a pin oak and a pine, if that's important, maybe it's not, but, so, that's why, that's why I said, should we include, but...
I just don't think it's been an issue, and we don't have big developments going in.
Right.
So it's, to me, it's a non-issue, and I don't know that I know the difference between a couple of them. But I don't think that they're going to be buying, whatever development is done, I don't think that their intent is to buy trees that are not native to the area. I just don't see it as a problem. You know, if it becomes one, if there's something that, that becomes something that the town wants to focus on, then I think we could address it.
Susan, the only thing I would add to that, when this whole thing of trees came up unsolicited, I had at least three, three people in my neighborhood who walk around, not necessarily like a neighbor, but who were kind of following this, and they said, can you please make sure that they don't just replace those trees they cut down? "Can you please make sure that they don't just replace those trees they cut down with pine trees, because the pollen is killing us?" And I never even realized that pine trees put that out.
That's the yellow we see.
So, for some people, it's not a big deal, but apparently for people who have allergies, it can be a big deal. And that's, anyway.
That's the name of the area, it's Curly Pines. It's pine trees.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The next one for discussion, Section 507-9, Removal Trees Prohibited Without Approval. Our existing language there is, "Removal as defined by this article for any purposes whatsoever shall be prohibited unless approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission through the site plan, conditional use, or subdivision review process." I didn't propose something here, but started, you know, I think there's an opportunity possibly to clarify removal is prohibited if there is intent to subdivide. And I don't know if this is correct, but at least what I sort of heard through the last couple meetings was, if, if an owner assumes property, like in the last example, if they change ownership and it doesn't matter who that owner is, correct, if a, if a, any homeowner wanted to clearcut, they could do that, and then decide to subdivide, right?
We're, I thought we were going to go beyond just basic subdivision, and I'll give you two examples. We have coming up another subdivision. It was here before, when realtor jumped the gun on who was inheriting the property, which is why he couldn't get the owner to sign off on it. And it was purchased by a developer, and it's a heavily wooded section on Tingle Avenue. It's two lots, was sent out to you guys before, I think in February. It's coming back with a new owner. They're going to want to cut down a lot of trees. This is the same as the Tingles, so they're very well aware that they won't do anything until they talk to you guys. However, I also have in my office, brand-new house going on Beechwood. I know that they're going to cut all the trees down.
Right.
And I've already been asked by the gentleman who's going to do the work, can he start next week? And I just thought I'd bring it up. This is what we were supposed to be, I think, addressing, is that, he's going to put a house in there. It's a pretty, pretty well-wooded lot. I just don't know how the Planning Commission feels about that.
Yeah, so in my, in the last section down there, where I just had some running thoughts or other considerations, the individual lot owners was, you know, the question, I think, for discussion as well, like, should they have the same requirements? Can we manage that from a town point of view or not? But should individual...
I'm sorry, where were you?
Page three, Individual Lot Owners, about midway through the page. Should individual lot owners have a similar requirement to minimize the removal of trees as part of, you know, I put new construction, maybe this is, maybe that's not the right definition? And should there be an approval requirement for removal of existing trees in that, you know, in that example? So maybe, you know, this removal of trees, Section 507, that we were just discussing, is really specific to the subdivision, but perhaps it's appropriate that it's a requirement of all.
Well, it's, I know in Rehoboth, when you submit a site plan with your plans, you've identified every tree on the lot, and which ones are going to be kept and which ones are not, and then you have to protect them during construction. It's a way to do it. I don't know if we want to go that far, if we, you know, we don't have, you know, we don't have a lot of heavily wooded lots, but there are, there are some, so I don't know if it's overkill or what.
It's a good thing the town solicitor is in here, because this is probably overstepping. But we generally, we have, we already have on the books that it says that you are not to cut a tree down without approval.
No, without notification.
All right, without notification.
For a subdivision, though.
Right.
Well, you're not supposed to do any work without notification.
Right, okay.
That's all.
All right. And we also have buried in there the fact that if, if you do something like that, the penalty is $500 a tree.
That needs to change.
Can, without changing anything, on an application that somebody comes in to get to do something, can we just put in bold type on that application that you cannot remove trees without notification, so that people can't say, "Well, I didn't know," and maybe even put, "The penalty is $500"? I mean, we talked about this at the last meeting, about some kind of notice on the application, and I'm just trying to pursue whether, how that makes you feel, Susan, or...
We talked about putting something on the partitioning...
Right.
...application. And I, and I think that that should be rehauled, something should be added there, that they need to then provide information on the trees, and they can't remove any until it's, you know, they have to show us the tree plan and all that. But on individual lots, we still have nothing. It does say, under getting your permit, that you cannot clear the lot without giving me 24 hours' notice, but that's all it says. And I think that word is getting out there, because this guy called me and said, "No, I just want to call in advance, because I'm going to look at it next week." So it's just a learning process for that.
So... On an application for a partition, you could put a warning?
Mm-hmm. I could put, those sections have to be, and put that they have to provide a tree plan.
All right. And that does not require action by the Planning Commission and then subsequently by the town council?
It's already, it's already...
It's already there, right?
...in the code that they're supposed to do that. It's just in two different sections, and no one, if you're subdividing it, you may not know to look at trees.
Susan, should it be notification or permission or approval?
I'm just going to put on the application, I was, I was, I haven't, I have to look at the whole application, because some of them are just old, and I don't know who put them together. But I thought I'd just put, you know, "You have to give me four sets of plans, you have to give me a tree plan, you have to give me a tree removal and replacement plan." And then I'd put the code section down, so that when they give me things, they've filled out that, and there are all those other things.
Okay.
It's like they have to give me a list of everyone within 200 feet. It's just one of the things they have to submit with everything else.
But then, do you have the power to tell them, "You can't take this many trees down"?
No.
And should we consider giving you that power?
Because she's being notified, yeah. Well, that's, I think, what, no. I think that's what Mark's trying to do, is say that if you take down this, you have to replace so many, and, you know, if it's within the footprint of the house, fine, but, you know, other trees, which ones are going to remain?
Now, is there still, okay, I own a property, okay, I have a house on it, and I decided I'm going to sell it to a developer. Could I take all the trees down before I sell it to that developer?
It's just one lot?
Yeah, if your house is on this lot.
Yeah, we have no, we have no, we have no restriction on...
So, I mean, that's the back doorway.
On a single lot.
You could take everything off before you sell it, to be honest.
Right. And let's go back to Tingle. If he had not given us paperwork for a minor subdivision, and he went in there and said, "Oh, I bought this property, it's got a house on it, I'm going to clear it, because I like no trees," I couldn't do a thing about it.
Nothing to do anything about it, okay.
He'd have to tell me 24 hours in advance, that's about it.
And what about the fine? Do you think the fine is too low?
Yes. I don't know when I'm going to enforce this fine. It's, it's, you know, once...
The penalty, the penalty, yeah.
And he forgot to give me notice, it's kind of, I then got to go back, look at paperwork, you know, send him $500 fine. A lot of them don't care, I guess. I don't know. I think, I think they're getting that, you know, you can't do anything to it till I approve the permit, which I told the one guy, but, you know, it doesn't happen that often that I have to look at it. I mean, Tingle was, was an extreme case.
We've, are you, we've...
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to say that, you know, whatever it was, two hearings ago, we heard from a vocal section of the community who was upset over the way the trees were dealt with on that, you know, that Evans Avenue project. The same time, I've heard from residents in Lake Bethany who are concerned about the idea that a single lot owner could cut down every tree. So these are neighborhoods that have the character, you know, as you pointed out, there aren't a ton of these areas, but there are some where there are heavily wooded lots or heavily wooded neighborhoods. You know, with that in mind, I think there is a logic to finding some, some restriction on the ability to just clearcut your lot, even if you're a single individual owner. And that may just be requiring, like, an enhancement of the requirement for notification, or it may simply say, like, you're required to get a permit to do this if it's outside your buildable area or something. Don't take literally what I'm saying about how you do it, but that it's done. We've heard from the community that people would like to see something like this happen.
Patrick, you had a question?
Thank you. Actually, I was going to bring up the point that Scott just made, and that Mark started talking about a few minutes ago, and that is what happened in Lake Bethany, where an individual lot owner had no intention of subdividing or a planned residential development. He wanted to build a single house on his lot, clearcut the lot, nothing prevented him from doing that. And there were a lot of our residents that were extremely upset about that. So, my point is, I think it is worth your while to address the situation, not just of subdivisions and PRDs, but of individual lot owners and what they may be permitted to do on their own lot for their own reason. And I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. I suspect you're going to have to get some legal advice as to what power you have to restrict somebody from clearcutting, but I do think it's an important issue that you should address.
I think there are two separate issues, John. You're trying to address, like, the sort of near term, this doesn't require, you know, an amendment to the zoning code, it just, but this might bring it to the fore, that this is something that needs to be addressed, and like, maybe get people thinking about it. And I think that's a, it's an, to me, it seems like an appropriate intermediate Band-Aid.
Both Pat and you took the words out of my mouth. I think we need, it needs to be addressed, but we have to be very cautious about how, how we go about this, because if you, if you respect a property owner's right to their property, but at some point there is a clearcut, to me, becomes a community concern, and we, maybe we can try to find some, some language that won't allow that to happen, at least without notification and potentially approval. But the approval part is the concern, how to do that is the concerning part for me.
This also ties into what I believe Scott was working on when I joined in October, but the tree density, you know, a position on tree density requirements, and, you know, just, just that requirement of, you know, people need to have something on their parcel, whether they choose to tear it completely down and put a new 15-foot tree in to start that regrowth, but I think that starts to change the character of why we're talking about these certain communities that have very mature trees are, you know, are creating, creating this discussion right now. So if, I think if we believe that we want to create more mature green space over time, then the fact of, you know, clearcutting, you know, you might want to not spend the money if you could save some of those trees versus go back and plant new trees, but you have to have some tree density on your parcel.
Yeah, or a requirement to replace, just like with a subdivision on a single lot, you could have a requirement to replace those, those trees that are cut down outside the buildable area or something.
And I think that, that's also at the bottom of Page Three, where I added that in, because I think that definitely ties in with this chapter, and Article Two in particular, on, you know, trees on private property. This was the language that we left it at back in January or February, but, you know, each municipality around us has something similar to this. And so that might just tie in with how we, you know, these proposed changes.
Can I say another wildly insane thing?
Of course.
You know, when we, this ties into the unimproved lots, but right now, an unimproved lot, as Susan pointed out, is required to be maintained, like, to be mowed, to be, you know, so is, is there some provision that the Planning and Zoning Commission could consider that would allow someone with an approved application to allow, like, their unimproved lot to return to a, to a natural state, which would, you know, if you have a, if you have a lot in, say, Turtle Walk that you're never intending to build on, that's been in the family for 30 years, that you're not just continually using carbon to mow it, you're allowing it to, for trees to regrow there or something, if you want.
There are several examples in the canal, right? There's empty lots that are just being mowed with nothing on them for, for years, versus having, they could have trees on them, and be more desirable to the neighborhood. But, yeah, I think, again, it goes back to that, some sort of density requirement on a parcel.
Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but the only people who are going to really clearcut, if there's a clearcut, is somebody who's getting ready to do something. I mean, if you just have a lot, yeah, I can't believe you would go out and just clearcut the whole lot unless you don't like wrecking leaves or something in your own lot.
No, that's true, you don't, but, but I think what they're looking at here is making them add trees. I mean, there's, it's a little, it's a little pricey to have each homeowner give me a, a tree location plan, you know, along with their survey. We know that's, that's kind of pricey. But, you know, we may ask them to locate, you know, ones of a certain caliper, and tell us, you know, "Well, all right, but you have to have X amount of trees on your lot when you're done." That, to me, seems kind of simple, you know? Have someone go out there, when he's surveying the lot, pick, you know, ones with calipers eight inches or greater, show where they are on the lot, tell me how many are coming down, you got to put at least two back, because some of these lots are smaller, you know, whatever, and we're dealing with a lot of other things. And, and that way, it's easy to, I mean, keeping it as simple as possible is what I would recommend. Don't, don't try to overthink it. And then if you have no trees, you still got to put two trees in, you know, just, there's a requirement to replace, you know, I don't know, maybe we have to keep some of a certain caliper or replace them in kind, or, or replace them with a tree, but you at least have to, on these lots with no trees, you have to at least plant two, something along that line, so that everybody's got to put a tree in at some point.
Yeah, I think simplicity and enforceability are the, are two of the keys there, right? So it's like, the easier you make that application, the less onerous the requirements are upfront, and the more obvious it can be as to whether it was, you know, done or not at a final inspection, not necessarily even like along the way in a permit review. It could just be like, "Did you do it, or did you not do it?" And if you haven't done it, you got to, to get your occupancy permit, you have to comply with this.
John?
Mr. Chairman, can we take Susan's admonition about keeping it simple? Can we apply that to the continuing and final review of our comprehensive plan? I think we're in a good place. I have to, have to say that during the presentation, I thought we were getting, we were starting to over-engineer it a bit. I'm sure we can work through that, but I'm putting it on the record that I'd like to keep it simple. It's worked in the past, and it should work in the future.
Yes, keep it simple, and we know what the last word is. Mark, is there...
Yeah, so we have one more that, we jumped around a little bit, but the bottom of Page Two, Section 507-11, replacement of... but the, uh, bottom of page two, Section 507-11, replacement of removed trees required. So this is still in that subdivision category. Existing language, whenever during the course of construction or development on any unimproved lot within a subdivision and/or planned residential development, any existing trees located outside the proposed structures or footprints are removed, such trees shall be replaced except as waived by the Planning and Zoning Commission, by the developer or his agent at the developer's expense within- Sorry, I think maybe we're- Oh, such trees shall be replaced, sorry, except where it's waived, right? By the developer agent within three months following the issuance of certificate of occupancy, unless otherwise provided under this article. This probably nuance again, in the last example, the trees that were being proposed to go back were in the same location as the trees removed, not taking into account the footprint or the height of the structure. So I, I think, from what I remember, um, what I remember the representative saying is, you know, we're putting these back in these locations, it's a new tree. Some were very close to what appeared at the perimeter of the home. Others were concentrated to one section of the parcel and, you know, the middle lot, I think, had one tree only on it. Versus at that point, you know, put them back where they're gonna thrive and be right for the tree and also make, make the proposed improvements or the, the, the new, uh, you know, the new parcels better. And so I, it, we don't state that, it was my only observation and maybe it was top of mind from the last example, but, you know, clarifying that they don't need to be in the same location, but really, we're best suited for the improved lots and the trees. And I think, you know, you think about people not liking that location or cutting it down, there's areas that are better suited when you're looking at this, like front yards versus backyards where somebody might wanna, you know, have a deck or something that it might be in the way. And so I went back and looked at that plan and they, you know, the whole argument there was really that they were replacing 10 trees in the same exact location of 10 that were removed after the structures were put in. And, um, you know, it just sort of, sort of dawned on me that they could have been more evenly positioned or maybe the height of the tree or the type of tree would thrive, taking the, the actual structure into account versus just the location of the previous one. So, again, maybe this isn't necessary, maybe this can just happen as part of the review process or a recommendation, but, um, you know, uh, that was just a, a minor net clarification that, um, you know, in the language that encourages, you know, looking at it from a tree standpoint and the property standpoint versus just doing it as, as the ones that were replaced. And with that, um, yeah, this is a start, so if, if anybody has comments or thinks of something outside of this, I would, I'd love to hear them and then we could continue to refine this, I think, for, for the next meeting.
John?
With your approval then, Mr. Chairman, Mark and, Mark and I-
We're gonna do a Zoom meeting.
We will continue to now, um, start to refine this and all based on this discussion and, and, and what we heard and report back.
And you'll keep it simple.
I plan to keep it simple.
Mark, do you plan to keep it simple?
Absolutely, yes.
And hopefully, we can do this before our leader, Mark, takes on the working groups and all. But we will continue with your approval to, to work on this.
Okay, very good. Okay, I think that, bet, excuse me, I think that bet does it unless somebody has any more, Susan?
I, I just wanna bring up, 'cause it's kind of fallen off the, the agenda here, the permeable, um, ground covering. Because I have had quite a few calls from people looking to put in driveways and, um, one very upset person. But, but it also occurred to me that we are holding up, um, some people's work and everything, not just the property owners, but the contractors and, and such that have signed contracts months ago and don't know what to do. So if we all could put that back on your plate as to how that would go, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't want us to hold anybody up because we just didn't do something in a proper manner, so, uh-
I think we're expecting a feedback from the engineer from McCormick and Taylor.
She just, she noted that we're working on-
I'm sorry, I got sidetracked with the last thing and then I missed this one. So I don't think we've started that project yet, but, um, I will let Cliff know that that's of utmost importance to get that started. And we are working on a master service agreement with McCormick and Taylor because they're helping with so many projects. So, once that, and I just sent off what our attorney said yesterday afternoon, late, after the council meeting. So, um, that, that should be moving forward and that should be starting shortly.
So, to, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
Whoever wants to. John?
I'm interested in that this has come up, because I've had the question posed to me by a contractor as to, um, could there be an accommodation, because this thing is, is, is not yet final, of if he put in a concrete driveway, it's a, currently has a macadam driveway. If he was to put a concrete driveway in, but with a drainage system on either side that matched the percentage of absorption that you would get if you were putting paving, paving stones down. He said, "I recognize that this would be wider, but if I had, uh, and not just scraped it off, but had a dedicated drainage system on either side of that, that was the equivalent of what you would get between the paving stones, whether that might be an acceptable alternative." Uh, and I told, uh, I told the contractor, one, um, it was an intriguing idea to me, it was something that I hadn't thought about and that I would raise it. And I don't know if that's something that could be done now or not.
Not according to the pending ordinance, but I thought in that big book of ideas that it, there was something in there about crowning a driveway to drainage on either side.
Yeah, a low county, right.
But these are things that you, I mean, there has to be, right now, my direction is just one way. I'm, I'm, I'm just-
How many, how many people are we holding up?
Oh, like, three. I don't know. No, there's been a couple of people, one, one just was really angry, but, but there's been a couple. All new houses that had permits beforehand are grandfathered as to what they submitted. I'm not letting anyone change their ideas, whatever it was that I had, that's what you do or you put in stone.
That's the angry person wanted to, I'm assuming, put in an impermeable surface that wouldn't-
Nice, nice huge driveway, like a thousand square feet, yep, big, bing.
Right.
And, um, I, I, his contractor was, was very understanding and I, and I explained to him that it's not, it's not set in stone yet, it's, 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 um- It's pending, um, they will either come back and approve it as written, approve it amended, or, um, just get rid of the whole thing. And I, I can do nothing but, but just have you be patient and wait. And so, I'm not, I'm trying to tell them it's not a, it's not a no, it's a-
That, that person who's being held up right now could put in a permeable driveway that meets the requirements of the pending ordinance. They just can't put it in an impermeable-
Yeah, it, yeah, he could put in stone or something, he, he doesn't, he doesn't want to, I mean, basically. And actually, what he had was a very nice design of pavers in a pattern with concrete set in four sections. And I said, "Well, why don't you do permeable pavers, put stone in the middle and wait and we'll, we'll see what can happen?" And he, they don't wanna do that. And some say that it, the cost, um, there's, there's a greater cost, although I did do a patio and the cost was, um, just a couple hundred bucks and the person said, "Fine, we'll just do it in, in permeable, we'll put the big base in and everything." And I saw the guy, I went out and looked and the guys were doing all that, so it, I, I'm, they're all over the board as far as costs and everything goes. I'm, I'm not really sure, um, what the difference would be or, or, you know, whatever.
Scott, uh, if I understand correctly, if I have a macadam driveway right now, that's an existing condition and I wanna just, I wanna put maca, new macadam on it or dig that one up and put macadam down, I'm, I can do that.
You cannot do that.
No, you cannot do that, you can't.
Even for an existing driveway?
It says if you're going to repair or replace more than 50% of it.
So you could, you could seal it.
Right.
You could seal it, but you couldn't, you couldn't rip it out and put it back.
I got you.
Well, I think, I think based on, uh, what I'm hearing from you, Susan, and, you know, including the cost, and, and including the, the fact that people could do something different until we get a final decision, I think we'll just continue the way we are. We'll try to pass this, pass this, uh, change ASAP.
Yeah.
Be on the next agenda and then we'll just-
My understanding is that then we're waiting for McCormick to tell us what to do?
We're wait, I think we're waiting on a presentation from the engineer from McCormick about exactly what John had mentioned, about like, alternative paths to compliance with the, the issue of runoff and infiltration. So that, so that there may, the way that I would see it is like, with the, what we have written is, is good, it, it achieves what we're trying to achieve, but there may be alternate paths to that. So you may be able to say, control your runoff with sloping your driveway to, or by a retention swale or something like that. If you could, if you wanted to go through the trouble of engineering that plan, you could do that and meet the spirit and the intent of the, the law, but we have to get something written. We can't, we couldn't just allow it now because we haven't discussed that as a code.
Terry, uh, what, how long do you think it'll be before they'd be able to provide a review and response to us?
I'm sorry, I just need to have a mic taped right here, it'll be good. I'm gonna have a, the, I'll speak with, um, the town manager on Monday and we'll try to get this moving as quickly as we can. Because we, I realize, and I did speak to the gentleman that was very angry, I realize, and I hear Susan on a regular basis talking to people and explaining this process. I know it's taken up a, a lot of time, so I, we'll try to move it forward. I, in fact, that's the note I have, M and T ASAP.
All right, well, I thi, I think what maybe we'll do if the, you know, it's up to the council anyway, but- I think what we'll do is hopefully make, we'll take what we have, we'll make a decision hopefully next meeting, hopefully, if we can, if we don't have, uh, the engineer in response, that's just an additional option, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I don't wanna hold everybody up because-
Well, it's, it's actually not the Planning and Zoning Commission at the moment that's holding it up, 'cause it's a pending ordinance in front of the, uh, town council. So, at, at least as far as if it's not gonna change, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission's work is, is completed. Now, we're gonna, the Planning and Zoning Commission should be considering these alternate paths and that's what the engineer from McCormick and Taylor needs to present to us.
Well, may, you could bring that back to the, uh, the town council as to what, you know, we're hearing today and let them know that, you know, we have no problem with whatever you guys decide you wanna do and if they wanna do something now and change it later and have us look at it again, future modification, fine with us. I just don't want, and apparently, it's not us, but I just don't wanna hold them up.
I think, I think the action we took was we sent it back to the planning commission.
All right.
Oh, okay.
And that's why it's a pending ordinance, because it's for further work by the planning commission.
My rep, I-
I like to, I purposely misinformed you there, but the other thing I-
What we'll do is we will-
It's called passing the buck.
Yeah.
We, then, then, uh, the buck stops here, so what we're gonna do is, we will make a decision, we, this commission, will make a decision next month, and you can tell your people that, uh, that are coming to you, uh, on the, um, the, the paving, uh, situation.
Can, can I just-
We'll send that forward to them and they can do whatever they have to do.
I would recommend that, that you look at it and, and look at, and, at, at the percentages and try and think about it and look at the information that you got in that big book from McCormick already and see if there are minor changes or something that, you know, I mean, we'll, we'll continue to, to work on it, but I'm, I'm just asking that you take a look at the information you have at hand-
Yeah, I did, that was very good.
And, um, um, see if there's more to discuss and, and think about.
One, one thing that, um, I just would suggest is that I think people have in their mind permeable surfaces and impermeable and one is good and one is bad. And I think the whole point is not to have permeable surfaces throughout town, it's for stormwater management and to have it directed in a way, you know, that it's not running off into the streets or there are other ways of doing it perhaps, like this crowning, that's not, um, permeable, but it, it, um, it reaches the objective or the goal. And I think if it's explained to people somehow in a preamble, um, it might be, it might make more sense to them. That's just a suggestion.
I just wanted to note also that there, there was and seems to still be broad public support for the work that was done to get to where we are today. So it's unlikely that we're gonna go back to, it's okay, you can just have a completely impervious driveway at this point, I mean, without some alternate path.
I think at this point, uh, we're waiting for McCormick. And if they can get it to us, great, if not, we'll, we'll-
We'll muddle through.
We'll muddle through, there you go. Are there any other comments, questions at this point?
I, I was just gonna say that, one of the things we can ask McCormick and Taylor to do is take a look at this specific issue and make some recommendations and hopefully, within the next month, they can get that back to you all.
That would be good.
So, when I, when, when we direct them, I, I think we can just get them to say, just look at the situation, this is an issue that's holding up some people and it's pending ordinance for us, so we would like to resolve it as quickly as possible. Something that would just, would be, you know, sort of like the crowning or, and, and can still maintain, you know, some pervious qualities, but not, not charge an arm and a leg for a pervious surface.
I, I think that's exact, that's the exact, pervious qualities, maybe, maybe two-year ground covering. So we take a look at the various ways that could, that could be, um, accomplished.
I think we summarized everything. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I, I so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Home favor, aye. And thank, thank you very much and I'm sorry if having this thing goes so long. And so is my nose. And I saw my sniffing-
Well, I hope you feel better.
I will.